Good to go. Oh, okay. All right, well, let's call to order. It's August 22nd and it's 7:01 PM. Kay, could you do roll call, please?
Candace Hart. Absent. Jesse Garcia.
Here.
Cindy Suplegio.
Here.
Jared Mork.
Here.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Nick Mission.
Here.
Jeff Davlin.
Here.
Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
And Jay Anstrom.
Present. All right, well, the first item is the approval of the minutes from the August 8th meeting. Do commissioners have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Thank you, Kay.
Yes, thank you, Kay.
Yeah, thanks, Kay. With that, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, Nick made the motion and Jared seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item is public comment for persons not on the agenda. So if anybody here is wanting to comment an item that's not on the agenda, if you could please step up to the podium. But if you're here to talk about the application we'll be discussing later, we'll give you a time to talk about it then. Anybody on? Any participants? Oh, okay, all right. Well, sweet with that, we can just move on to the next item, which is that application. It's a combined application for 522 Highway 133. Ellie, Jared, it looks like. Ellie, did you do this one? Is this one you?
Both of us.
All right, nice. Well, sweet, I guess. You guys want to kick us off?
Yeah, Ellie will get us going and then I'll jump in at the tail end.
Perfect.
Yeah. So this is a combined application for a new restaurant. It includes an administrative site plan review, two alternative compliance requests, a conditional use permit, and a variance. It will require courtesy review by the tree board. And it has also been referred to you guys for a public hearing and recommendation, and also the Board of Trustees for the same thing and action. Administrative site plans are not typically referred to the PNZ or the Board of Trustees, but we did it because of the request for variance and the public funding assistance for the undergrounding of electric lines. Let's see, the application was noticed in the Sober Sun and all the mailed and posted notices were sent out. Yeah, just a quick overview that they will obviously present more on what they're doing, but they are proposing to demolish the existing structure on the lot and build a new two-story restaurant. Right now, the property is zoned commercial retail wholesale and the restaurant is a permitted use. In the 2022 comp plan, it's zoned mixed commercial, which restaurant use is also preferred as a use and is permitted. In terms of the comp plan, it generally matches with the comp plan. The site plan balances auto pedestrians, bicyclists, site access from Highway 133, and non-motorized connections with the Rio Grande. And then the building is also the focal point of the property and is close to Highway 133. And the landscape screens the parking lot, which is all stuff that was talked about in the comp plan. In terms of the UDC as it is now, it meets the district requirements for access, vehicle access, and provides sufficient parking. And with the outdoor dining component in the application, there is use-specific standards for that, which the application complies with. Just a few other quick things. Building height is a maximum of 32 feet 3 inches, which complies with their 35-foot maximum. We haven't reviewed any signage for it. And then, and we recommend that a sign permit be required prior to installation of any signage. A lighting plan is not required for the size of the structure, but all building and site lighting will be reviewed prior to the issuance of building permit. And then lastly, solar access. It's in Zone 3 and has no solar access restrictions, given that it's not adjacent to a residential zone district. But it also isn't likely to cause any changes to solar access on adjacent properties, given the orientation of the building and the surrounding properties.
So kind of jumping in and jumping back a little bit. One of the, the reason for the conditional use permit was kind of discovered very late in the game. I kind of sprung it on these guys at the 11th hour. So it's part of the reason why it's not in your application. But when going through, we just failed to recognize that the lot depth didn't meet our minimum requirements. And that's largely due to the triangular shape of the lot, C dot right-of-way in the front, and then rafter right-of-way behind it. How our code measures lot depth, it's an average of the lot depth at either end, so zero and roughly 189 or 90-some feet. So the actual lot depth is about 91 feet, about nine feet short of the lot depth. So it's considered a non-conforming lot. And our code allows development to occur on non-conforming lots if a conditional use permit is issued. And so similar to the 111 Main Street application, we've presented a finding or a condition that says a conditional use permit should be granted if the rest of the development proposal is acceptable to the town. Jumping into a few other kind of unique aspects of this application setbacks. This is kind of the rationale for the variance or the reason for the variance request. So the CRW Zone District establishes rear setbacks based on adjacent uses. And it gives two kind of adjacent uses. It's either alley or commercial and industrial zone districts. Unfortunately, a transit zone district isn't identified and isn't listed. So we kind of looked at, staff looked at what was adjacent to it, La Fontana Plaza, how that was developed. And we felt the more restrictive 20-foot setback should be applied to the site. And as you see in the application, they have designed a site plan that largely complies with that, with the exception of kind of one element. And that's a portion of the roof overhang and a structural support column for that roof overhang. And the application is requesting a variance for that for about 10 feet into that 20-foot rear setback. Staff reviewed it and given kind of the interpretation of the setback, given the setback encroachment, we think overall the setback is warranted. And there's a couple of reasons. You know, the triangular shape, the large setback, the site access really force this site to develop at the southern end of the property and really creates large portions of the property that are difficult to develop. Another reason is the Rio Grande right-of-way is likely going to remain a non-motorized transportation corridor well into the future. And I would argue that there's probably going to be limited to no structures ever built in that area. So the setback encroachment isn't going to affect other buildings, which is one of kind of the main purposes of setbacks. And then the third is, you know, it's a relatively small encroachment and it sits about 30 feet above ground level. And so, you know, its impact to use of that area is pretty limited, as well as retaining the 10-foot setback should allow adequate space for utilities to be put into that area. So staff is supporting the variance request. I think one challenge that we highlighted in the staff report that we're kind of looking to this group to help guide on is setbacks or variances require the approving body to make a series of findings of fact. One of those is that the setback is not a result of the applicant's own actions. And so I tried to draft something up, but would love this group's thoughts on how this roof overhang and support column is not of the applicant's own actions. In addition, you know, I think it's really worthwhile that this body reviews those draft findings to make sure that they adequately address the rationales that you all feel comfortable for if you support the variance request. Getting into kind of the, the alternative compliance requests. There's two of them, as Ellie pointed out. The first is landscape island requirements in parking lots. Our code requires any parking lot with a row of parking spaces greater than 12 has to provide landscape islands. It also sets a code allowance that a landscape island cannot be provided if the application proposes a increase in open space on site of 15%. The application has complied with that and staff finds that the alternative compliance is warranted and supports the request. And then the other alternative compliance is related to parking. So the project does comply with all parking standard or parking requirement minimums. But in order to do that, is requesting a alternative compliance for the drive aisle length. Our code requires that from the property line, the first 20 feet has to be a drive aisle and then you can start your parking lot. The application is proposing to reduce that from 20 feet to 10 feet, highlighting that there's approximately 42 feet between the edge of Highway 133 pavement and where the parking lot begins. And that should suffice for that safe access into and out of the property. I think in addition, the reality of the Crystal Valley Trail being where it is in front of the property line, even if Highway 133 is expanded, there will probably always be roughly 20 feet between the start of the Crystal Valley Trail and where the parking lot begins and largely would meet that code intent. So staff does support that alternative compliance request as well. Two other items that came up that we highlighted in the staff memo is first, kind of the vehicular access from Highway 133. So the application proposes a full turning movement intersection and proposes to shut down the northern access to the site, just retain the southern access to site, adjust it slightly so that aligns with Dolores Way. In the application packet, they provide an engineering report and traffic study, kind of supporting their proposed design. In addition, they received a C dot right-of-way permit for this full movement, full turning movement intersection. We did want to highlight, and we did highlight in our memo, that the 2013 C dot access control plan discusses both Dolores Way and access to this property being right-in, right-out only. In addition, the ongoing mobility and access study, MAP Carbondale, that we're working on, that is currently being drafted with recommendations, received significant kind of public input over the past year. A lot of that input was focused on throughout town, a lot of it on Highway 133, and a significant amount on this intersection, Dolores Way and 133. And some of the draft recommendations of that MAP Carbondale study are that the intersection should be converted to right-in, right-out configuration and pedestrian improvement should be done to improve overall safety there. These recommendations align with the age-friendly Carbondale Highway 133 study that was kind of going along at that same time. With all that being said, the MAP Carbondale study has not been formally adopted. Those recommendations have not been finalized. They could change, but I think it is worthwhile to consider a lot of that public input that has gone into that process. And the other is the age-friendly 133 study. It was not a town study. And so that's more just kind of for the purpose of this citizen input, if you will. So one of the site plan review criteria is to determine if the traffic generated by the development is adequately served by the street network. And so we kind of bring all this up because it's one of your guys' review criterias. Do you feel that the design, that the C dot permit for a full turning movement support is, and the site plan supports or is supported by the street network? And that those traffic impacts are sufficiently mitigated? If so, you guys can recommend approval of it. If not, you know, I think some feedback to the application or to the applicant would be worthwhile. And I'm sure they will speak towards this quite a bit in their application. And then the final element worth discussing, and sorry for the lengthy presentation, but there's a couple of items, is the undergrounding of the overhead electric lines. And so the UDC requires that any project underground overhead electric lines. Excel requires for this development that the about 500 feet of overhead electric lines, the underground from the southern end of this property, north to the northern end of the rafter right-of-way where the Rio Grande hits 133. About half of that is in front of this property, about half of that is in front of rafter right-of-way. And so the applicant is proposing to partner with the town. And in their application, they highlight either through a fee-in-lieu or a cost-sharing agreement with the town to do that work. Staffs reviewed it and we support the request. We think it's reasonable to partner in this case. But we believe that the cost-sharing agreement is probably the best route to ensure that those underground electric lines are the undergrounding of the electric lines is done with this project and not delayed further. So with that, we, we do believe that the project generally complies with the UDC. Highlighted some of the topics that we think are worthwhile for additional conversation. And we have prepared a motion to recommend approval of the combined application with about 13 conditions and the various findings of fact listed at the end of the staff memo. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'm sure the applicant would love to walk you through their project.
Any questions for staff?
Before. So we did not receive any public input when the when the staff memo and packet went out, but since then, we have received two pieces of public input. We've given them to you and to the applicant. One is from Dan Bullock. And he's got some comments. Generally, it's about some of the landscaping proposed on-site, as well as access, both from pedestrians and vehicular and suggestions on different ways of addressing the site access from 133 and the others from Pat Hunter that was received today. And it includes a staff memo. I haven't had a chance to review it, but discussion looks like a lot on-site access. I'm sure Pat would be more than happy to discuss his app or his his letter. And then he included some exhibits related to the access control plan, what a potential roundabout could look like, and a post-independent news article from 2013 when the access control plan was adopted. So just want to make sure those are in the public record. Sorry.
Yeah, no, you're, you're great. Questions for staff?
Stupid question. What is a drive aisle? And is it labeled on their parking plan?
So the drive aisle is just the portion of the site access from the Highway 133 property line to the start of the parking lot.
Okay. And it normally would be 20 feet?
That's what our code requires.
In this case, it's what?
They're proposing 10 feet.
10 feet, okay. And what goes in the drive aisle? We have the bike lane.
It's, it's, it's largely for, for vehicular access, car stacking in, into the parking lot and into the public right-of-way and out of both, I guess. So that's, that's really the intent of it, is to provide that safe area to be out of the travel lanes of the roadway.
Okay, but there's a lot more going on than just cars going in and out.
Yeah, in this particular application, it does cross the, cross the Crystal Valley Trail. There is some adjacent landscaping to it. But the portion on the property is really just that vehicular access point to the site.
And if they met code, it would just be two less parking spaces?
Give or take. Two, maybe three.
Three.
Yes. If you're going from 40 to 10, I guess these are nine-foot spaces, plus or minus, so.
So you'd really technically have to have, you'd have to lose
Three.
Three.
Well, I'm sorry. It actually, I went to six because you're actually taking three from each side to get the 30 feet. 20 feet.
20 feet.
20 feet.
And it's 10 feet now.
An increase in 10, so it'd be two to four, depending on how the geometry all works.
Right, right.
The advanced mathematics. Is that it, Yancy?
Maybe get away with just losing two, one on each side to get closer to it, but, okay, okay. Thank you.
So all it's really doing is it's compacting like what we could call a conflict zone. So those cars at the, at the, see, north here is right. So it's going to basically put, you know, those cars that are head angle in parking with the proximity to in, out, as well as the trail is all happening in a much more compact space.
Right.
Yeah. Is there a way of labeling those spaces that we could, in a sense, gain a drive aisle? Like if we labeled those as compact only, right? Do we have the purview over that to create this extra drive aisle to?
Well, drive aisle is the center.
Right, but if you...
Honestly, these, these parking spaces are at 18 by eight and a half, and I think a compact. So that's already on the small side.
Saying, like, it wouldn't adjust the size, but you would have the labeling there of a compact. So you wouldn't have somebody with the large truck parking at the...
That's certainly something that the applicant could choose to do that might help with the realities of how that parking lot's utilized.
Right.
Maybe.
If anybody just drove a Mini Cooper.
No, we're not, probably.
But who would make that choice?
Mini Cooper?
Weird. Any other questions for staff?
The setback variance we're looking for is for the roof, correct?
And, and that support column. So I don't know the exact, I don't remember the exact site plan, but there's one that shows that roof overhang and has dimensioned out. It's roughly like nine by 10 feet. Okay. Triangle or element in there, I think. The roof overhang.
Cool, thank you.
It's got to be the column I'm talking about.
Any other questions? I did have one question just regarding.
Wait, I lost it. I don't know.
So I suppose the fire, the fire department has reviewed this and they're all right with not having a turnaround space in here because honestly, that kind of makes me nervous about an ambulance pulling in and having to back out onto 133.
Yeah, the, the fire department was sent. Referral comments, and I don't believe we received anything back, so.
Okay. We haven't received anything back? Because I thought there was, there was a referral comment.
They did say.
Yeah, I did see Carl Oliver's response.
Okay, my apologies.
But I don't believe he addressed the
About the site access.
Yeah, but do we know the, the width of the parking lot?
Or of the drive aisles? Are they 12 by 12s or?
Drive aisle is, hold on.
It's 24 feet.
Drive aisle is 24-inch total.
So at least we're, at least we're full width on that.
But if the parking lot is full, you're backing out.
I mean, one solution, you know, that most eastward space could be a half of a
It could be like a K-turn.
Anyways, moving on.
All right, well, I suppose if there are any other questions, John will have some time later on for the public to comment. So you will have your chance. But until then, let's pass this along to the applicant and they can kind of do their do their presentation for us. So, hey, guys?
Hello. Let me share my screen. How are we doing tonight?
Good.
Hi, I'm Ryan Lee. I am a partner architect for Form Five.
Forrest Longren, I'm the land planner at Form Five.
David Wood, I'm the designer on the project.
Yeah, and thank you, Jared and Ellie. That was a great presentation. I mean, you know, we need to chat through this more after that. It was very thorough. We all know where Carbonell is. We're sitting here. But it's always good to orientate ourselves to where we're at as far as the project is concerned. Here's a site plan showing the proposed lot. It is surrounded by the Raptor bus station. It's on 133 and it has the Rio Grande Trail and Crystal Valley Trail adjacent to it as well. So there's a lot of activity on this corner. And we have mostly industrial and retail uses surrounding this property and recreational. So in the CRW Zone District, we do meet all of the requirements minus the lot depth, which was outlined as 100 feet, but with the triangular lot, it's very difficult to hit that. We're about 91 feet in lot depth and staff supports that conditional use permit. It's also good to note that the, there's no setback requirements in this zone district when we're adjacent to a transit zone district. So when we were looking at this application, we decided to put a 20-foot rear yard setback on this property to give us the most restriction to make sure that we weren't going to be designing something up to the setback of the Rio Grande Trail. So we're asking for two alternative compliances here and one variance request. The first one being that drive aisle length that we've been discussing. I do want to clarify that we have a 12-foot distance from the property line to the start of parking. So it's not 10, it's actually 12, and we can go over that here shortly. The second thing is removing the landscape islands that are required. It is allowed as a alternative compliance to remove those parking islands if we provide over 15% of landscaping in that parking area. And then the third thing is that variance request for a, an encroachment into the 20-foot rear yard setback. And really, we're requesting to establish a 10-foot rear yard setback for this property. So here's the existing conditions. You can see the existing building. There's a lot of encroachments of that building onto Raptor's right-of-way currently. There is a gravel path on the back as well. And the north access easement, which we are proposing to remove. So getting rid of these two access easements that are currently on the property, turning it into one. Here's a good overview of this property. You have the vehicular access at two points. Again, that north, we're moving it. We have the Crystal Valley Trail here, Highway 133 and the Rio Grande Trail. And then this is right next to Derail Park. Here's the proposed kind of diagram of showing what we're trying to do on this parcel. So to the south between La Fontana is the parking area. The area in yellow is going to be the building envelope. And then the area to the north is the green space, really creating a connection to Derail Park, the Rio Grande, and really opening up that space for events and activities and making sure that we're not maximizing the site because we can't. So here's an overview of the site plan. This is the landscape plan. It shows all of the improvements for the drive aisle here, the parking, the proposed building itself, and all the landscape elements. You can see there's, really the goal of this project is create some connectivity in the town with this. So, you know, there's the parking requirements that we're trying to meet them, and we do. But really, we're trying to drive home people to bike here, walk here. It's something that is very close to the Rio Grande. It's close to the bus stop. You know, I don't imagine, you know, most people would probably prefer to bike to this restaurant. It's close to the bus stop, you know, I don't imagine, you know, most people would probably prefer to bike to this restaurant. So again, the two alternative compliance requesting is going from a twenty-foot to actually a twelve-foot for that drive aisle length and then removing the two parking islands, but also creating that fifteen percent open space. So this is a diagram showing that drive aisle length. You see here from the edge of property line right now to the edge of parking, we have twenty feet. We have forty-one feet from the edge of Highway one thirty-three to the edge of parking, which is a C dot requirement, we meet that requirement. I think that is creating a good buffer between Highway one thirty-three and the parking lot. We're showing that we're making sure we're maintaining pedestrian access for the Crystal River through that crosswalk here. So here's the second alternative compliance, removing the parking islands. But you'll see that we provided over twenty percent of open space of this specific parking area. This is a diagram highlighting the amount of parking that we're providing for the property based on the total gross area for both the interior and exterior of the building. So here's that variance request, that column sits three foot nine into the twenty-foot rear yard setback. And the overhang is roughly five feet over. And so in that request, by establishing a ten-foot rear yard setback, the only thing that's going to be encroaching in that is going to be this column. And we want to maintain that ten-foot rear yard setback for future development and utility placement back there. So here's a view, driving into town, you know, as we design this building, we're really trying to focus on creating a statement piece for the town. It's really going to be one of the first buildings that catches your eye as you drive in. We paid homage to the Rio Grande Trail by using this old railroad bridge, which is going to be recycled and tying that to the railroad and to D Rail Park and really creating a nice, beautiful outdoor seating area and, and area for people to be. And this is a view looking back at Red Hill, you can see the access from Highway one thirty-three and how this parking would lay out. I'm just gonna stop on this slide and open it up to questions, I'm happy to go back to anything as well.
Any questions regarding the alternative compliances or the variance requests?
That's very clear. I have no comment.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. None? All right. Do you guys have more, is this?
That's it.
That's it, okay, great, okay.
Go back to the pretty view.
There we go, pretty view, I like it.
Do you have one off topic question, I guess? Ryan, did you get the, where'd you get the recycled train bridge?
It's a place in North America, I can't remember.
That website that we always used to go on.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, we convinced the client to.
You got one.
High sustainability, he's, he's, we're trying to achieve lead, but there's one element to add to this, which would be pretty cool.
You are going for lead on this?
Okay.
Clarification, so the park lot is all going to be pervious pavers. I want to talk us through that first quickly.
Yeah, the, the goal is to really create more, you know, that drainage and not have just a solid parking surface there on top of creating the open space. So aesthetically and for functionality, we wanted to do pervious paper system.
No concerns on maintenance, especially winter on that. It's quite, quite the spot for, for that kind of application, especially given the, some of the other kind of high use you're going to see in there.
Yeah, not particularly, I mean, unfortunately, we see less and less snow, so. You know, it's not like we're in eight thousand feet, we're going to get two or three big storms, we don't have concerns of maintenance on that.
I hear it's going to be a bomber year this year, I don't know.
I'm hopeful.
Okay, right, I just wanted to make sure the, the hatch was right, I thought, I mean, it's, it's very exciting and just, just checking in on that, thanks. Oh, one more question, have you spoken with Raptor about that, that eight-foot access?
We have.
We've already provided approval on that, do you have any?
Yeah, we've been in a lot of conversations with them about cleaning up the, all the encroachments. They've also requested that we remove all Siberian Elms back there, so we've been in conversations with Raptor.
So Brett's all good, Angie's all good on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Do not have a finalized lease with them, but they're in support of it, we've emailed and met with them on site and they're very much in support.
Just for clarification, I mean, it looks like there's about twenty feet between the Crystal Valley Trail and the beginning of the parking spaces, so there is adequate space for a car to come to a complete stop between the parking spaces and the, the trail. Correct.
Yeah, I know we said ten, but we're measuring twelve, and yeah, you're about at twenty feet there. I think it's just the unique lot being how it's situated and the way that that property line runs and where Highway one thirty-three is, that the intent of the code is to create that long drive aisles, which we have, but the property line is so far back from the edge of pavement, that's why we were challenged to make the park.
Yeah, understood.
I mean, I like that you can get at least one stack, you know, one car.
Ryan, what's the width of the driveway access when vehicles are parked along both sides of the parking lot? Just trying to find it, but.
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four.
But we have eighteen, eighteen-foot depth stalls, deep stalls?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, so we are constrained on that.
And the trash enclosure is on the corner there, kind of along the, the Rio Grande?
Yeah, it's tucked back here and we'll be making sure we screen it appropriately per UDC.
So Ryan, what happens when this place, everybody loves it, everybody wants to go there, it's all full of cars because not everybody biked that day and the trash truck comes? It seems like, can you, is, is that a, is that a no park, is that a parking spot or a no park, is that, that aisle left open for the trash truck?
I mean, the intent is to have that open for service, you know, but when they have deliveries early morning and late, you know, they got to coordinate with trash there and hopefully we're not having trash come by four P M on a Saturday.
Right. But there is some question on that one, right? I mean, I, I appreciate that you're trying to maximize parking and not trying to get down on you and just trying to identify.
Yeah, absolutely, we need to work through that.
I mean, the intent is to close those off at certain hours when deliveries and trash pickups occur, so we will have signage on site, closing off those three spots so that we maintain access to the dumpsters.
So we'd probably get to, to sign that in somewhere, identify that.
But that's not the architect's job, that's the restaurant's job, right?
Correct, yes.
We're not, we have absolutely no control over that whatsoever, no way in this room has control over that.
Well, and then as far as, as far as this entity is concerned, that would be, I should be notated on these plans just to identify that, just for, if we're looking at alternative compliances for a parking lot, we're getting into those details, right? We, we, you need to function smoothly, so, and it's as simple as some sort of note on there, right? So the, we confirm that the client, that your client knows, so it's, you know, kind of clean and clear.
Down here, it says time restricted parking within those three spaces that are pulling into there, so.
Oh, which I want to play, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong plan, wrong sheet.
I'm looking at the engineering plans.
I'm looking at the landscape.
Oh, of course you are.
It looks at engineering plans. Yancy. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that, no.
No, all good, yeah.
My apologies.
So there'll be signage saying no parking Monday, or no parking whatever day. Okay.
Correct, uh, it does exist, it's true. Got it.
So we do have control over that. Jeff, I know you're still on the call, do you have any, do you have any comments or is Jeff still on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hey, Jeff.
No comment at this point, thanks, Jay.
All right. I did have a, just kind of a technical question regarding the, the coordination with, coordination with the access onto the site and just knowing that there is that potential for the right in, right out, and I forget what they called that. The little island.
The pork chop?
The pork chop, yes. Has this been, does, has this access been designed with that potential, with the space adequate to install that pork chop? Okay. And. Oh, Yancy wants to talk.
I, I want to speak to that just for a minute.
Sure.
Because, because the pork chop, I don't believe is what C dot's going to allow under the notice to proceed throughout maybe Carbondale, I mean, we're seeing that, I, I've got four or five of these right in, right outs in Division Three on Highway Six, silt all over, and they don't consider them a very good technique for life safety on a right in, right out. What they prefer is a raised median, and they've been really pushing that. The condition of approval that you have is fine for me, but keep in mind, there's nothing we can get permitted without C dot approving it in the right of way, and, and I think they're going to push back harder each year on pork chops being allowed for right in, right out control. The, the intersection as is, I would say would be difficult with a pork chop. And I don't like them ahead of time because then it just, we expand the pedestrian crossing of our intersection. It's not a safety. I am, especially Dolores, I think the town's going to end up with a raised median, which would make a right in, right out on both sides, and it can be planted, it could be open, it could be concrete, it could be decorative, it could have monuments, it could have art in it, all those things, and I think that's where C dot's going to push you. So I would hate to increase our curb returns for a future pork chop and then not get a pork chop and we have this wide sea of asphalt for pedestrians to cross where I, I support trying to do it because we don't want a restaurant open trying to build a new enter, entrance to our project. But that needs to be coordinated with C dot. The language, I support, we'll do everything we can to try to minimize the impact for a future controlled right in, right out. If that kind of helps that thought.
So as of right now, it is designed for that pork chop?
It's not.
It's not, okay.
The pork chop that C dot would want, we have to flare it so far to the right so a car can't make a U-turn, which pushes that curb return to a high radius, which I think would look really ugly on this site plan without the pork chop there. It'd just be a sea of asphalt.
Right.
And those, the pork chop design at C dot's levels changed about every two years, the criteria on that design.
Another question for you then, do you, from what you've seen, do you see there's adequate space with this design widthwise to accommodate for that raised island in the middle of one thirty-three?
Yes, oh yeah, you've got sixteen feet or fourteen feet to do that, in fact, it would eliminate a bunch of asphalt out there and make it green. You know, when the town went through their whole one thirty-three, I was a very, very big supporter of that and community input, we chose to just leave it all asphalt across there with that, what we call suicide lane left turns. I'd like to see it landscaped and controlled left turns, but that's what they'll do. We just built one in silt on Highway Six for right in, right out, and you can do it two feet wide with a concrete barrier. And then landscaping, there's a lot of techniques you can use.
Right.
I would lean that way. I haven't seen any of this new study that Jared's talking about, and I don't know if C dot's commented on it, but we'd support, I think, those multi-moto pedestrian across our intersection, whatever comes out of that in the future when we need to restrict our controlled access.
Of course.
If that helps.
No, that, that's amazing, thanks for the.
And I wanted to share maybe one other thing about the variance on the parking being twenty feet on the aisle lane, you know, that was really for the benefit of the public right of ways, not so much one thirty-three, and you think about it, those curb curb face lines and sidewalks, the curb line was always about ten feet from your property line. So we had parking lots getting built and you couldn't get into the parking space, the first one without doing a three-point turn. We don't have that here, so we're in compliance to the intent of the geometry, it's just that our property line is different than a normal public street right of way.
Right.
If that makes sense, so I, that's why I was very comfortable with that variance here, that it would function quite well.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to add those two things by listening to the conversation and I'll be glad to answer any other questions if you have.
Thank you, thank you, Yancy. One last question for you is, uh, why do you have a dry well in the area to, in the pervious paper parking lot?
Uh, we probably will end up with one after that pervious pavers collects it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Understood. Instead of using curb and gutter and inlet structures, we'll use the porous pavers and underlying corrals to do that.
Right. Yeah, perfect, thanks, Yancy.
I'll direct all several questions to Yancy now.
I mean, as you should. That makes sense. Any other questions for applicants? Okay, well then, given that, I, I appreciate all the, all the public sticking, sticking through us through all that, but now let's just open this up to public comment. And if you have anything you would like to say, please step up to the podium and, you know, hold it to three minutes if you can, just so that we can keep this, keep this meeting rolling and that everybody has the same amount of time. And, uh, yeah, just state your name and your address and, uh, yeah, whoever would like to speak first.
Good evening, I'm John Armstrong, I'm a Sotank resident. And this is actually probably a perfect time to ask this question and thank you, Yancy. One, one, two, two, County Road, one oh six, Carbondale. And so my question is, with all the talk about the pork chop and, and I'm not sure about the, the, the space consideration, but isn't this a perfect time to revisit our roundabout right there?
Thank you, John.
Okay, my name is Teresa Salvador and I'm also at one, one, two, two, County Road, one oh six. And I really appreciate the design in the building, everything looks beautiful, but I'm also here concerned about the right, right? Because what I feel will happen is people that need to go right, right, will need to go, if you need to go back into town from the restaurant, where will you turn around? Will you go into the bus area, which would be the most likely place, which Raptor would not appreciate because it'll congest it, so where will this traffic go that's going right, right? And, or if you need to go, you know, same way on either. So referring back to John's statement, isn't it a great time to look at a roundabout? Because we don't want to create problems before the project's finished. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Hi, I'm Deborah Burley, I live at sixty-five South Pine in, in Carbondale, in the Sotank area. And I guess the thing I, I want to point out, I've lived in Sotank for thirty-four years and I've used Dolores and one thirty-three turnoff, and when we first moved to Sotank, we had the Sotank Bridge to go over, we had access through the CRMS and we lost both of those. So now we have a neighborhood, we have a community school with thirty to fifty cars coming in and out, we have an industrial park. We have CRMS using their service entry for all their vans and deliveries. And I think to ask us and all those folks at this point in time to, to drive point eight miles all the way to a roundabout in the middle of town to come back is a lot to ask, most people are probably going to turn right, go to the co-op, flip a, flip a U E and go back. And so I think it is time to talk about it, a roundabout. And I don't know when they did a count of cars, they had a strip at one time and it might have not even been with the community. And it might have not even been when the community school was even in operation, but nine months out of the year, we've got the community school parents coming in and out to pick up their kids and drop off their kids. So my idea is pushing the building possibly to the south and maybe flipping the green space or make, maybe making your in and out, out of the restaurant on the, on the north side instead of directly across from Dolores Way. There is two entrances right now into what's existing. And you're removing that one for your green space. But I'm saying if that was basically your in and out and pushing the building north, that's maybe, I don't know, achievable, but that's my idea. I wish you all the best. But, um, I just don't know if you all realize how many cars are going in and out of Dolores Way. And then you're gonna add that going right to a roundabout. And it's already plugged up, going towards one, going towards eighty-two to make it to the light. If you go anytime after three o'clock, it's already all the way up to City Market. So now you're gonna add all those other cars going all the way to the roundabout to be all in that lineup. So something to think about.
Thanks, Deborah.
So I'm Nikki Delson. I'm Chair of Age Friendly Carbondale. Do you need my address again? Ten fifty-six Villanueva. So right across the street from where you're building. So bravo, it's gonna be gorgeous. But. So, um, in the dangerous as design study that we did, um, Dolores Way came up as one of the most serious areas of concern for safety. Particularly during the highest, uh, traffic, uh, times. So you, you all have access to that study because we presented it here. When they did the twenty thirteen Access Control Plan, the original intent after Rafta and the traffic light was not allowed was to put in a roundabout at La Fontina Plaza. And how that got not accepted comes up in, um, county commissioners meetings at around that time. And if anybody wants that information, I could share it. But the way that cars now make that turn coming out of Dolores and going south is they go into La Fontina Plaza. They make the U-turn and they go the other way. And it is so hard to get across that street, um, if you're in a car. So you all said that you're hoping that this will be for bikes and pedestrians. And I think that that's great because I could, I'll be able to walk right there. But it is a bike pedestrian issue and since BPT was responsible for the RFP for the MAP project, you really need to loop them in to take a look at this. I know that the board, the tree board was looped in, but I've talked to people on BPT and they have not seen this. So I think that it would be a good idea since they're working directly with MAP for you to get BPT, um, involved in it. And the other thing that I want to say, because we've been working, um, with C dot is that a regulation recently came down from the Federal Highway, um, Administration to all Departments of Transportation saying that their default for funding any new projects, infrastructure projects is gonna be that the, um, town or county, wherever, has adopted a complete streets project. Complete Street Resolution and a Complete Streets Program. That's gonna be default. If you have one of those, you are gonna be elevated higher up in consideration. So I know that in the MAP project, they are recommending a Complete Streets Resolution. So that's another reason to loop in the MAP project to make sure that this project now will fit within the Complete Street Guidelines, because it, it certainly looks like it does, but there's certain language um, in terms of accountability that will come if we do that. So, um, I'm hoping that people will walk and bike there. There's no way for people, if you're looking for lunch hour people to come. Um, there's really not a safe way for people to get, who live and work on Dolores, um, to be able to get across the street there. It just does not exist. So I hope that we will all look at that, all of the commissions that are involved in that as we excuse me, as we work with C dot for the whole stretch of one thirty-three.
Thank you, Nikki.
Hi, I'm Sue Zislas, also from Age Friendly Carbondale. I live at six, four, eight Serry here in Carbondale. And I want to start out saying that I love your design. I mean, it's really, uh, it's gonna, it looks like it's gonna be a fantastic asset to our community. I love the way it's tied in to the two bike trails and the landscaping looks very well thought out. Uh, and we want you to succeed. However, the one big concern, like everybody else that has, uh, spoken, it, um, you have so many potential clients, customers right across the street. And there's no way for anybody to walk over or to ride across that street, one thirty-three in its current condition, whether it's right in, right out, or getting across that darned street is very difficult. And you have all those businesses that want to have lunch there. Um, and, uh, you also have a a world renowned rehabilitation center that's opening up. That will have people, um, in wheelchairs and, uh, we will have a lot more people with mobility requirements. Not that we have to design this for that particular thing, but, but this is going to be, reflect a change in the clientele. Um, and those people will want to roll across the street and not have to jaywalk. Uh, and, um, it, we want you to succeed, but unless this traffic pattern for cars, bikes and pedestrians of all sorts, uh, is addressed first, I think it's going to be a problem. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sue.
Patrick Hunter at, uh, one, one, three, one County Road, one oh six. And I echo everything that they've just said here. And, uh, I've been over there thirty-one years. And, uh, back in the day that we didn't have traffic problems, right? So, uh, yeah, the other day I was at the Car Care Center and, uh, I was gonna come back to the house. So I tried to get on one thirty-three and I sat there and I sat there and all this traffic just kept coming from the south, which we never used to have. And eventually I got in, eventually I got to the roundabout, which was full. And then as I got through the roundabout, I could see cars all the way to one, to eighty-two. That's like four o'clock in the afternoon. So anyway, I got into the stream of traffic and eventually got down to Dolores to make that left turn in. And I had to wait there several minutes until I got a gap so I could pull in Dolores. So we're at a point now with our Dolores intersection that something else has to happen. And what you're doing is basically putting some force behind that. Because your customers aren't gonna be happy if they have to fight with that traffic coming and going. I mean, they'll go to another restaurant. So, um, I'm just, I was sitting here, I'm thinking, you know, let's say I'm driving a flatbed truck and I've got an excavator on the back of it and I'm coming out of the Wagner Rents. And I need to go up eighty-two. So what are my choices? I'm gonna come out, you're gonna have your right out option only at this point. I mean, that's what everybody's saying. And then I've gotta go all the way to the Main Street Roundabout with a semi and turn around and go back to eighty-two. That just doesn't make any sense. So, um, and in the package I sent you guys, there's a letter back there from, uh, reckling article that was done by John Stroud in the Post Independent, uh, back in twenty thirteen. And, uh, we actually had the three county commissioners ready to approve a traffic light. Done. They were totally in favor of it. And then somebody from C dot said, wait a minute, guys, we need to talk. Ten minutes later, no traffic light. So, uh, very disappointing. And I think, uh, John might have been there at that time, maybe. So, uh, we came close. And as, uh, one of our people here said, and Deborah, that, uh, at one point, there was gonna be a roundabout at Dos Gringos. Uh, which is approved, by the way, by the, it was approved in the approval of the access plan. That includes the C dot, Carbondale and Garfield County from twenty thirteen. Except it was never built. And, uh, so I included in the package I sent there, I did some cut and paste and showed a roundabout sitting in that intersection and it worked fine. And it worked fine for everybody that's using that intersection. It'll be safe. It gives you the pedestrian access, just like it'd be a, basically what I did is I just photocopied, uh, the Main Street roundabout or one similar to it and stuck it on the page. You can see how it works. It works fine. There's another problem we're having, and that is.
Pat, I'm sorry, we're at three minutes and twenty seconds.
No worries.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, are there any other, uh, comments? Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? I'm, I mean, I think that, uh, the town of Carbondale, as well as all the P and Z applicants, I mean, we all know that this intersection is not a good intersection. It's one of, it's probably the number one problem intersection in the, in the town.
Yeah.
So to what extent does tonight's review and recommendation play into traffic at the intersection?
Right. I think the tricky thing here is that a lot of this then is kind of more dependent on the town of Carbondale as well as C dot and not as much on this applicant. And I do understand everybody's concerns and, you know, issue with this intersection because it is a really bad intersection and we do need to figure something out here on it. And, you know, I know it is in the works, but it's definitely taking a long time. And, um, Jared, I, I can't recall the, um, twenty thirteen plan with the roundabout. That roundabout is located right by the co-op, correct?
Co- correct. And the town is, um, currently designing a roundabout at Highway one thirty-three and Industry Place. Designing, not constructing.
Right.
Still need to get funding for that. But, um, if that does get built, I think that kind of softens the distance people would have to try, travel if, you know, it was right in, right out for both of these or a median was installed or wha- whatever other traffic measure to reduce left-hand turns at this intersection. You know, that helps travel going south from Dolores and, um, but it doesn't really address the people heading north. There's still that point where there's no kind of ability to easily turn around. If you leave the site, go north without having to do a U E in a parking lot or um, something along those lines. So, um, I do wanna highlight that, um, as, as a potential, but you know, the, the, the reason it's part of your guys' review is your site plan review criteria state. Does the surrounding street network have the ability to handle, um, the proposed design and, um, can it adequately mitigate traffic impacts? And so that's why it's part of your review criteria. If the answer's no to that, then, um, the applicant would likely have to come back with some other solution to find a yes. If the answer's yes to that, then, um, you guys can recommend approval of, of the site plan. But, you know, that's one of your review criteria. So Nick, that's why it's part of this application.
Okay.
You know, there, there are things and, and other applications, you know, impact fees or, um, you know, partially, uh, making partial improvements towards a future solution. There's things like that that have been done elsewhere and not saying that's right or wrong here, but just highlighting that as ways that other projects have mitigated traffic impacts.
Right. And I don't know, I guess just to add to, uh, just the concerns that are regarding, uh, traffic. I mean, I think we're all pretty aware of how intense the traffic is on one thirty-three these days. It's, it's a lot. And just in ti- in the entire valley, I, the all of the western slope has seen so much, uh, activity in the last five years that it, you know, all towns have been caught off guard by how much traffic they have. So it's, you know, in credit to the town of Carbondale, I mean, I don't think anybody was projecting the amount of traffic loads that we're seeing right now, just because of the growth that we've seen. So, um, it's definitely a tricky situation that I think everybody's struggling with. And I don't know, I, I understand that it's a bad intersection, but I, I just hopefully bear with us for a bit until we can figure out something there. It's just, I'm not, I'm not sure how much this application is impacting this intersection, I suppose.
Well, it's almost like some, like, people want to live here.
Right.
Just crazy. Yes. And then that, you know, it, it's hard to think that it, like, that, how many spaces overall are you, are you, I'm sorry. Uh, I know you had a, a.
Thirty-two.
Thank you. It's hard to imagine the thirty-two, you know, is, is, is going to. If anything, you know, I appreciate it. And I'm sorry, I forgot who made the comment, but you know, if, if anything, you know, the, the half-full glass, half-full perspective would be this is maybe a, a catalyst in some way to help kind of push along some necessary improvements. I think we all know, and I think I've soapboxed how many times over the years with, to this group and others about the need for one thirty-three in general to grow up and to find its way in a cohesive, safe and appropriate manner for this town. So, um, there's, there's work to be done. We know that. And then, and I think maybe what you're trying to say, Nick, is that, you know, to put all of this on, all of that on this applicant or this application is, you know, not really appropriate. So.
Which, I mean, we can definitely discuss about this. Um, I keep forgetting the name of the, the little island. At the pork chop, I don't.
I miss dinner, so it's, it's not helping right now. Would you call me?
Um, actually, before I forget, um, are there any other comments? Cause we could close the.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else online? Okay. Owner. Yeah. Um, with that, um, I think we have Nikki.
Oh, yes.
I don't think that in our, at least in age friendly coming here to talk about the issues is in any way that we're trying to say we don't want to see this in town.
Right.
I mean, I think that it's, it, I think it'll be just gorgeous to come into town. I think it gave us another platform. Cause it comes, is to say, hey, once again, we need to deal with one thirty-three, but I don't want you to walk away thinking that Dolores Way was the major one that there were issues with because there's jaywalking across the street from City Market. There's jaywalking at Montessori School and the trustees know all of this and they're work, you know, then it's not like they checked out on this. They had a work session with, you know, retreat where they're working on it. So I didn't want you to think that we don't want to see this. It just was saying, let's put the energy now into making one thirty-three a livable, safe place for everybody who lives in the town. So.
Totally. Thank you, Nikki. Uh, I'm sorry, Pat, real, real quick, but. Oh, uh, sorry, actually, we do have a comment by, uh, Chester.
Hi, I'm the, I'm the project owner and I've been stuck on audio only. I haven't been able to unmute myself. I've been waiting for this meeting for months. I'm really excited to be here. I'm tragically, I've come down with COVID and it really bums me out that I can't make it. I just wanted to say thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for listening to Four and Five's presentation. We've been working really diligently with a big team that includes Yancy and his folks, Connect One Design on Landscape Architecture to make this something that the community really wants and needs. Uh, I, I appreciate the public comment. I appreciate your time and I'm really sorry I can't be there.
Thank you for not being here.
Thank you for staying at home. But, but no, thank you for the application. It's, it's, it's beautiful and we're excited to work with you guys on this. Um, but, um,
Motion to close?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Pat. We're uh, we're gonna keep rolling. We don't, we're not looking to start a, a debate. We just wanna um, get comments and then work through this.
Noted, right? He disagrees. It was noted he disagrees.
Yes, it was. Yep.
Now or never. Gonna put on this, we won't get it for years. The roundabout, yeah. This thing's been in the works for twenty years.
So what do we, what do we, do we deliberate? Um, well, let's uh, can we, would it be all right if we closed the public hearing? Is everybody all right with that?
Um, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, well, yes, uh, I, and it's, it's tough, cause I mean, sure. We're, we're not gonna fit a roundabout in there.
No.
It's, it's too tight. There's.
It's gonna be just like the rodeo lot, too.
It's what?
It's gonna be just like the rodeo lot pulling into this restaurant from roundabout. Rodeo lot in Snowmass.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, it took me a second.
We went here in town, too. Rodeo lot. For what it's worth, um, we are having to acquire right-of-way to build a roundabout at Industry Place.
Hmm.
So I would assume it would have similar site constraints at this intersection as well, if a roundabout were pursued.
Right.
And I'm not a civil engineer, but I'm just thinking it's roughly the same amount of space within the C dot right-of-way.
But does acquiring right-of-way kill the project? Have you guys studied that?
It, it, it was more of just a, a comment about how it would fit in, in the site. And I don't wanna presume how it could or could not work with the all properties at the corner of the intersection.
Right.
Lot more play here.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, if I'm hearing you correctly, and if I may, um, what's being asked of us tonight is if I'm hearing correctly, to determine whether one thirty-three in its current state can support the project. And I don't know that it, I don't know that it does.
Well, I mean.
Well, whereas, we have to do a few things. That's, that's one of the things we're being asked to deliberate on.
But that's what's rising to the top. I mean, everybody in this room is saying the same thing. Should we go in order?
So um, Jay, do you wanna start with the low-hanging fruit or do you wanna go right to the, right to the big dog?
I mean, we're on it. Let's just keep talking about it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, I guess the, the tricky thing is, I mean, we do have a traffic study that's been provided, um, that they are stating that it, you know, is meeting all of the requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that being said, it is an intersection that, you know, how much, how much further development is gonna happen to where Dolores even becomes busier? And it, do we actually have a future plan for that intersection that would manage additional traffic flows? And I don't know, like, I guess, you know, I guess C dot never really decide, they, they determined that they didn't need a roundabout at this location.
Right.
So I guess, I don't know, to have, oh, Yancy.
Can I speak?
Yes, please. Please do.
Getting the traffic a little bit.
Do you know about traffic and stuff kinda thing, Yancy?
That everyone's a traffic engineer because they have a driver's license. I do know that. Um, I'm gonna go back and maybe at a highlight of what, you know, working on intersections in one thirty-three for over thirty-five years and being here when the bridge is two-lane and everybody, and I tried to help the town get funding from C dot. It's like, we aren't gonna get a bridge for thirty or fifty years here. Well, Carbondale was proactive and did a bunch of planning, et cetera, and got way up on the step program. We got the bridge and it wasn't too many years later because you guys did the planning and went with C dot with your access control plan that you got all the funding for all the improvements you did along one thirty-three. I really like to hear what Nikki said because if you guys do what you're in this process, you elevate that funding mechanism. Our traffic analysis isn't working with C dot with this Dolores. And of course, you can blame me. I got the access permit and built Dolores in that subdivision over there back in the day with C dot. But like Patrick said, back in that day, you, there was not a traffic in, traffic issue. Um, the impact of this project doesn't influence anything on the Dolores side. It will function the same and the same on our side. We don't influence with each other because the way the highway's been built. I think we are a catalyst, as every project will be. And the roundabout that's planned at Industrial will make a huge difference in this town because you only have one right now. And the capacity at Main Street will grow by thirty to forty percent because of, as the folks in the public commented, probably everybody here does. We go down to the roundabout to go north, do a U-turn and come around. Well, now that'll be an industrial place. So it can do a lot more and a lot uh, timeframe because it's half the distance or even a third of the distance for all those businesses. So that's the plan. That roundabout will really en- enhance one thirty-three. C dot wanted to make sure that our full movement was a better plan than a right-in, right-out right now. We don't feel, C dot doesn't feel, and I think Carbondale probably in the community, Dolores is not ready to be right-in, right-out with some other global traffic improvements, either this next roundabout or something different. So I wanna just stress to you that our project doesn't change the impact on the Dolores side of really one thirty-three. I think, I don't know the folk, the person that said it, but she's correct. It will affect my client's patriots that's coming to the restaurant. Will they be willing to sit there to take that left or go north and take Village back into town if they're coming from downtown or not? Or will they just ride a bike or walk? You know, I think Dolores, everybody over there, we're within walking distance of a quarter mile by going through a signal light. If people are willing to go to the signal light versus jaywalking. So I, I just give you a little background on there that we're not creating any more problems with I, I guess, the grid at street and C dot. We're only seventeen and I think fourteen additional trips peak hour. Um, and you know, most restaurants, we're gonna be, bulk of our business is gonna be after the peak rush hours left town. So I just wanna give you a little more background thoughts on that, that I agree, Jay, with you, that we're not really adding too much to the problem, but we can be a catalyst. And I'm really supportive of what the town's done historically for the last thirty-five years. And I think if you're proactive, you can get your next roundabout and I think you'll be surprised. Back in the eighties and nineties, we were stuck out here for, for around one eighty-two to get across that single-lane bridge. Traffic was tough. But when we got the bridge widening, it solved it.
Mm-hmm.
But
okay.
Just wanted to share that.
No, Yancy, I really appreciate that very much. Um, I'm gonna push back on it a little bit. I mean, I remember you coming up here, was it about a year and a half ago telling us the traffic on, you know, from the lumberyard wasn't gonna impact one thirty-three. You did a traffic study or had a, a third-party consultant do the same thing.
Right.
Now we got a problem. So I just, I gotta be honest with you. We're just, you know, it's just one more nail in the coffin. Um, furthermore, you're saying, you know, people who work on, people who live and work on, off Dolores. The lumberyard project?
Do you think?
I don't know.
I, I'm not sure if that's really uh, appropriate. It's, it's, it's an anecdotal kinda comment. I don't know if there's any real thing that, that documents that as an issue on, on one thirty-three.
Well, there's, I mean, okay.
Probably safer to leave that one out of this conversation, is with, without any kind of factual documentation.
Okay. I mean, I think that anybody you ask in town of Carbondale would say that traffic is decidedly worse along one thirty-three now after that project is complete.
Again, it's anecdotal subjective. I just wanna kind of keep it real with that, with this conversation. So this is focusing on, this is a, quite a bit different scenario.
I think it's relevant because we're talking about the Industry Place Roundabout. I mean, the industry, the Industry Place Roundabout was part of the five-lot subdivision where City Market and the lumberyard are. The, the full plan for how that development can function with the highway requires the Industry Place Roundabout. Otherwise, you're forced to go to the Main Street Roundabout for all right-hand exits from City Market First Bank and the lumberyard. But so I, I think it's, I think it's interesting that we're talking about the Industry Place Roundabout as a solution for the Dolores Way intersection as well. But um, I mean, I, I remember, well, you remember, Nick, is we did talk about how the um, what's it called? ProBuild and City Market are gonna have an effect on traffic on one thirty-three, and it certainly has.
Yeah. I mean, I, I appreciate what everybody's saying here. You're not wrong. It is subjective and not necessarily. I mean, I think it's relevant. But can I just move on to my second point, Yancy? What, what we're request, what we're, what we're requiring of people here is to walk thousand, over a thousand feet from Dolores Way to the closest walkway on, on Village Road. Is that, is that, is that the intersection, the walkway that you're referring to?
No, I'm, I'm saying that the park and ride, the Rafta. People on Dolores can go to the back of that, walk across to the signal light. You wouldn't wanna walk all the way down Dolores and then go down one thirty-three.
So you would cut through Rafta?
Yeah, the public access.
Intersection.
Yeah.
And then a thousand feet.
That's what I would do. Well, it's five hundred feet on our side.
Yeah.
But I mean, we use a quarter-mile distance as people are willing to walk. And I, I would say Carbondale's more walking and biking than most communities. That there's an alternative to get to this restaurant from that part of the area. Not saying that people won't get in a car and do it. That's human.
Mm-hmm.
Choices, but.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna break out the scale, but I think it's more than five hundred feet.
I, I said a quarter mile.
Okay.
Thirteen hundred and twenty feet.
It's a lot.
That's kinda what we use. Some people use a half-mile. A lot of people walk a half-mile to go to restaurants and shop, but.
Assuming you are physically capable of walking a half-mile.
Yeah. There's a lot of.
There's a lot here. Okay. In any event, we got a problem. I, you know, it's an access problem. It's a civil rights problem. Um, and I certain, by no means do I wanna kill a project, but I do wanna draw attention to this.
Jay, can I ask you a question while Yancy's up there, too? Sorry to interrupt, Nick.
Sure, certainly. I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, go for it.
And yeah, see, you might have the answer to this, but looking at the twenty thirteen access control plan, C dot has never proposed anything except right-in, right-out at this intersection. There's never been um, a roundabout proposed or in a plan. And it sounds like there was some discussion over a traffic light, but there's still, C dot is not advocating for a future traffic light or roundabout at this intersection. Is that correct?
At Dolores?
At Dolores.
I believe that's correct. It was looked at in the process because, you know, the access control plan was part of Carbondale, Garfield County and C dot through public hearings and property owners coming in and that whole process. And I think it was looked at for a signal light and a roundabout in the spacing and locations. I think Village was looked at, all of them was. And I think the access control plan landed with these being right-in, right-out, Jeff.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. I mean, I, the only reason I bring it up is if C dot was looking to the future and saying an improvement for this intersection would be X, Y, and Z, it might be more tangible for us to talk about. I don't hear C dot. I don't hear C dot proposing anything except what's there is, is right-in, right-out. And Yancy, you mentioned a median. There hasn't been an access control plan since twenty thirteen as far as I know.
Right.
Is where, is you, is that just your idea of a median there or has C dot discussed any other improvements to that intersection that we don't know about?
No, the median was proposed in the two thousand thirteen as same as the four-lane with the five-lane. And the town discussed it back and forth and decided they wanted the median. They, they felt the median divided the town more so than just the, the, the suicide lane. C dot backed off and said, we won't require the raised median for controlling accesses. We'll give you the suicide lane or a double left because that's what the town wanted versus the um, landscape median at that time in two thousand thirteen. Of course, C dot wanted a five-lane, four-lane road and C dot, Carbondale pushed back and said, no, 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 we don't want that in our town. And C dot accepted that also. So there's, there was a lot of discussion there. And all that is in the minutes and meetings and comments when that access control plan, all that information's still there.
Yeah, thanks for the background. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that as of right now, there's not any other plans for these guys to, for this team to design around. So I mean, for us to ask for them to design around a future roundabout that doesn't exist, that's not possible and it's not feasible. And so, I mean, as of right now, they're, they are meeting uh, you know, the, a full access to where you can pull out and take a left. Um, but there is the possibility of put that meet, putting that median in the middle and moving forward with the right-in, right-out at this intersection down the road. I don't know. I, I just don't know how much more we can put on them without actually having anything for them to follow, because we don't have anything for them to follow.
That's kinda what I was trying to say, too, Jay, is if this had the opportunity to be a catalyst for a better Dolores intersection, I would love to explore that. I just, I don't feel like it has that opportunity. And I, I don't know, I kind of agree with what Yancy's saying, that the timing and use of this intersection on the, on the applicant's side of one thirty-three is limited in impact on the, on the problems associated with this intersection.
Yeah, right. Maybe, Dave, it's okay. And there's, I would love to hear from some other smart folks on this, on this commission. There's a few folk, a few of us have been kind of taking a lot of the time here.
Yeah, sorry.
New ideas or new comments, if, if y'all wouldn't mind. Kim, Cindy, Jesse, everybody except for Mark.
I'm not sure I qualify as one of the smart folks, but I'm happy to weigh in. Um, the fact that we found somebody that wants to put a business on that weird triangular lot and that they designed such a gorgeous building, green space, access. I think you did an incredible job. This topic, hundred percent, it's a huge problem and it's right at the top of our list. But I don't think it's fair to put that burden on this project. The burden of Dolores, the Dolores intersection. Um, I think the variance, I think all of the things that we need to talk about, we should go ahead and discuss, but I think you're, I think you've come up with a great solution for a very bizarre lot. And um, there's a business in there. Well, there has been a business in there of sorts, a variety of businesses that have been operating on one thirty-three up until now. And I, I just don't think it's right to put the burden of the C dot issue on this project.
I agree. That's the basic. Yeah, I think that's the basic thing here is it's a good project that C dot and our traffic issue. We have other work to do on that. And I think the start, the first roundabout will take a while and we'll see if that helps, but we can't assume we're gonna have another roundabout at any point in time. So it's a great project.
You guys just hold your design for a few years and then, and we'll let you know when that sort of comes. No, but, but right. Um, yeah, and I was just gonna say, I, I think Chester's still online, but I think that's a bold move. Um, I appreciate that. That boldness, Chester. Um, that's a, a really neat parcel. Um, and so thank you for having the, the foresight to create a place of community. I think that's what we see in our, in our dining area here in Carbondale is it's a sense of community for locals and for tourists to come together. Um, the location is always gonna be what determines how much of that community comes out. And this is one of those bittersweet projects, cause though it'll bring community together to that area, it might create some uh, More kind of highlighted impact on that. Um, Highway one thirty-three access point into the property. Which is is gonna be a little challenging, and I'm sure, just like any other project that comes through. That corridor, it'll have its growing pains, uh, but I do appreciate the project and the collaboration to. Uh, bring forward that place of community to the town of Carbondale. I think that's what. Um, the town likes, and that's what it would like to see in that space. Um, and everyone here has. Made some valid comments. Um, Nick, I appreciate your, um, your foresight as well into, you know, this, this is one of those. Things where it definitely. Makes people kind of walk and and be a little bit more mobile to get out of their cars, and if that encourages. That accessible kind of means. By walking, then I think that's the direction that people will have to take. Um, we can't control human behavior when it comes to. Getting in cars like Yancy said, um, but hopefully we can encourage the the walkability that Carbondale does have. Um, which is a neat aspect that this town does have.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, yeah, good job, you guys. I think. This is the first project I've been pretty excited about on one thirty-three. A lot of them come with a lot of headaches. This one is just a given. Proximity to a light. Doesn't really make it that much easier if you want to put another light at Dolores Way. Proximity to a future. Roundabout, doesn't really make sense to put a roundabout in here. So to me, this is just. You know, if that's what the owner um, wants to put in there. Great. I'm very excited for this, so. Good work, guys.
Thanks, Jared. Yeah, no, I I I agree. I think that this is a great project and. You know, as we've said, we don't really have grounds to. You know, do to make any improvements to the access uh, at this time. So I mean, really, I don't think there's. There's no grounds for us to request any additional than what you guys have already done. And yeah, I think I think it's a, it's a good looking building and it's, it's definitely a very prominent building. Which is. Exciting to see something that is a little different than just some boxes in this location, because it. It's, it comes right out to that point right there, and it's a pretty obvious. Location on, when you're coming into Carbondale, so I appreciate the. The foresight that you guys have put into. Make this look good. And um. Yeah, I mean, I have a couple minor question or minor comments regarding like site layout sort of things, but. We'll get to those here in a few, I think, so.
Justin, Chester, I'm not sure what would you prefer, but um. You know, I, we have a small town and I actually really appreciate this is a little bit. Off. The formal path, but. Folks came up saying that, you know, they really appreciated you reaching out to folks. And cruising around town, uh, I know Mike Arnold spoke highly of your approach. Uh, to reach out to other uh, restaurateurs in, you know, in the town. And so I I think. You know, that number one feels really appropriate. Like, if you've done your homework, you've kind of considered. Like what what this town is about, and then like the 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 tight knit nature, so I think. Just to kind of put that out there, um, thank you for doing that. Thank you for saying hi, for introducing yourself to folks. Um, and thinking about the community that this is. And two, uh, yeah, I mean, a lot of really great comments here. I think in addition. Um, this design team is very thoughtful about. The location on the Rio Grande. Yes, you 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 can't, there are some really big question marks. We know that, and I think what we've all kind of acknowledged, we we can't. We can't change it, neither can you. You know, you, no one's gonna drop, you know, a roundabout in the middle of this thing tomorrow. Um, and for better or for worse, but what you did do was look at context, the Rio, the views. And you came up with a a really outside the box kind of project that does the best it can and builds on some awesome. Other opportunities. Um, and and I I applaud you guys for that. Uh, and you know, ownership as well to to allow your team to kind of to do that and to to dig deep like this, so. I think upon, you know, in addition to whatever else is saying here, I think it's. An exciting project. Please stay true to the lead intent. Some of those, you know, kind of hopes or product, I don't wanna call them promises, but. You're 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 laying out some some lofty goals that I would would love to see you stay true to that. Um, because yes, uh, you know, it it is a prominent position. Upon arrival, you have a great exit crowd. People are just gonna wanna cruise in there on the way home perhaps, grab a drink, grab a bite. Um, wondering what you're gonna serve. We'll get to that later. Um, but thank you.
Uh, Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not on this issue. I'm curious if you, if we're gonna run down the. The variances, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's uh, next on the list. So let's uh, let's talk about some variances.
Bang it out. Which year, which uh, which page does Jared have you in? We're gonna, they, a single. Twenty, okay, thanks.
Wait, you run across your screen like that.
So landscape architect then.
Let's see, do we want to talk about the alternative compliance to the landscape islands in the parking?
I would love to speak to that. Sorry to jump in there.
Go for it.
Sorry, I I. Thank you. Yes, I I mean, I I love breaking up, I love the idea, right? The intent of landscape islands in a parking lot, especially a large one. You know, to all you Walmarts of the world, uh, it 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 does help, I think, on some level. And there are some, you know, small boutique projects like this where it it, I do think it is an unfair disadvantage. You know, where we need those spaces. You've gone above and beyond the fifteen percent. You've thought about neighbors, you thought about transition and views. I I I think except for those, the 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 two maybe large shrubs that could impact sightlines, which I I do think should be looked at. Um, just because of some of the constraints at that drive aisle entry exit point. I personally, you know, have zero issues with the loss of those. Those islands, especially with permeable paving, some of the other things that you're doing to consider aesthetics and kind of the quality of. Of that space. Yeah, I I, you know, I actually really appreciate and and have zero concerns around the loss there. I think it's a good. Good, good uh, backroom trading on that one.
What do you feel differently?
No, it's a good solution.
Honestly, it's kind of a sacrificial space between there and the Wafton Tama Plaza. It's not really like an area that you really wanna. Beautify, I don't know. It's just, it kind of is what it is and just, yeah, it's there. So, are we all in agreement that that uh, alternative compliance is okay?
Yep.
Great.
Next.
Done.
Ten foot.
Drive aisle line. So that's discussing the ten, request from going from twenty feet to ten feet. To the, from the property line to that first parking space. Does anybody have a first stance on this that we could go off of?
No, and I think I mentioned my comment of, like, maybe you could just blindly label those spaces to keep them open. It's like. Compact parking spaces. I think that's a good strategy that helps you meet this. While providing enough parking. I don't know if we wanna go any less than. What is it, thirty-two? Right, yeah.
I mean, I very much agree with what Yancy said earlier was just that, you know, this is really. More designed for properties where you have curb and gutter right up against, right by the property line. And making sure that you can actually turn into those parking spaces. When, you know, we do have so much space within the right of way that I, I really don't see an issue with it. Does anybody feel otherwise?
On a logistical level too, I just ran some quick numbers on it. There's actually, you could actually stack one vehicle on both side of the trail. So, you know, there is that scenario, and we don't clearly, it's something we would rec, be recommended, or you probably never. But it it, it feels like there's some.
Yeah, yeah.
That's smaller cars.
So then the last one is the variance regarding the setback from the back. Does anybody have any? Passionate. Stance they want to take on this. I mean, I think it meets the criteria the way it's written. I mean, I, it's just the footprint of the building is, you know, I mean, if we're just. We're not looking at that column. Footprint, the building meets the criteria, but doesn't even need a variance.
Did you see the part that staff said, one challenge is the town? That the town must find the setback variance is not a result of the applicant's own actions.
No, I mean, it's a pretty peculiar site. I mean, that's definitely not the applicant's fault.
Can we say that? It's the shape of the. It's the shape of the lot.
You guys can can say that. I think the challenge is. The size of the structure and the choice to build a large roof overhang. Or design considerations that the applicant made that forced that. Setback encroachment, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but.
Value of adjacent properties.
What about mother nature and, you know, protecting from the weather?
You you could, you could put that in there if you would like to discuss. Covering pedestrian areas from potential rainfall. I just want to make sure how I wrote it would be. A way that you all felt was. A good reason to defend why this was not their own actions and that you aren't setting a precedent. For other variance requests from setbacks. Because someone chooses to have a large roof overhang, for example. I I hear there's a desire to find a pathway to yes on this, and so I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to push back and say that's the potential negative of saying yes. So being very specific on what elements of this design are. Unique or or.
Appreciate that.
Warrant that is is worthwhile, so. Took a stab.
Could we add something to it that is just um, kind of to the extent of that? Uh, the town of Carbondale is willing to give this variance to increase the aesthetics of this prominent building.
Add two major portals.
Careful there, precedent setting.
Here, here's what, here, here, so, okay, I mean. If you take any one of, so I like the way you worded number two, right? It's not any one particular hardship. That is, you know, compiles the site. It's the combination of hardships. That is the site. That makes it eligible for variance. Right? And that is the precedent, right?
Yeah, if you've got a combination of hardships like this, that are this exact same combination, then, you know, we could look at it. And say it's precedent setting. When you have one, two, three. Right? The shape of the lot, the access point, and what was the third one?
Almost a triangulation of challenges.
And the, yeah, and the twenty foot rear setback in this, in this context.
Right. Agreed.
I mean, do we feel like this is enough to argue a variance?
I do. A- again, I I, what I would, to just to build on that. We have an application that has done. Um, that has gone above and beyond the standard. Building quality concept, site concept. And really minimized variances. Made the site work, uh, an oddly shaped site. Um, has has hit, you know, checked a lot of the boxes. I think I think it really comes down to, like Nick said, you know, it to to draw the lines in this minimal way. Actually feels like a success to me. Uh, without impacting. And you don't piss off Rafta at this point. Be my comment. She's on on board with this, then, then great. Uh, so.
Jeff, are are legal on board? How do you feel?
No, it feels like minimal impact. I'm I'm looking at the wording Jared used. And it's hard, it's hard to predict if this is precedent setting, but I'm with Nick. Number, number two is that the combination of these things. And whether they. Uh, create a hardship. I think that's the strongest language. Number. Number one, I have a hard time. Following, but.
Had a hard time writing it.
It's a tough one.
Wanders.
So I'm, I was trying to figure out if all of these findings for approval are required. Or if each of them risks some precedent setting that we're uncomfortable with. Like, the particular combination of lot shape, access points. Circulation, I feel like is so narrow. That it'll be hard to find another project with that same combination of hardships. Whereas the other five kind of findings of approval. Open up whether there'll be other projects with similar. Obstacles. And we wouldn't want to give them something like this to lean on for variance. Is that making sense?
Yeah, I think it's good. Good point.
So, so Jeff, to answer your question there, yes, the town to grant a variance, the town has to find compliance with all. Seven of the criteria. Um, and I I apologize, I didn't include the raw criteria in the, in the code, but essentially the first one. Is there's some unique aspect of the lot. Or of the property that creates the reason for the variance. The second one talks about the practical hardship. Um, the third is affording the minimal, the 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 smallest amount of relief. The fourth is your own actions, and then the fifth is um. Won't impact adjacent harm the public or. Uh, impact values of adjacent properties, and then. The last is a. It's uh, consistent with the spirit and purpose of the code. So, you know, I I think the the first one could be rewritten potentially. I think my goal there was to really highlight. Those, to 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 describe the uniqueness that I talked about in number two. And that was kind of the intent of how that was written is not just the triangular lot shape, but. Tying it back to the zone district, further describing the setback and the um, access control I could. You know, limit that down slightly, but I shouldn't add more there to. Limit it from being applicable to say a property on Snowmash Drive or. Um, Main Street or something like that when we're talking about the Highway one thirty-three access control plan, as opposed to just. Town desires for site access.
The other thing I heard, uh, Ryan mentioned was that. The overhang into the setback is actually not ten feet, so. Is there any value to? Narrowly defining what the overhang is. I think, Ryan, did you say it's the roof overhang's only five feet? But how did we land on ten feet?
I think we were discussing creating a ten foot rear yard setback, just instead of a twenty foot rear yard setback. And I think it's a reminder that we could have just said it's zero because it's next to transit, so. We've created a very. Strict restriction on the site. That was already challenging by doing a twenty foot and built a building and everything in there that was gonna be within the code. But in doing so, I was like, well, can we just create and establish a ten foot rear yard setback? And not necessarily ask for a variance, but just create that ten foot setback.
I see.
That's, that's not correct, so.
To help us.
So the setback established for the CRW Zone District is either zero from an alley. Or twenty feet from a commercial industrial zone district. This transit zone district cannot be considered an alley because it's not intended for vehicular travel. It's not intended for. Site access, all the things our code defines an alley to be. And so staff made the determination that. This property has a twenty foot setback. What the applicants contending is that. Although that is the more restrictive and the property could potentially have a zero. Although that is the more restrictive and the property could potentially have a zero foot setback if it was adjacent to an alley. The creation of a ten foot setback is. Some middle ground, if you will. After the variance request is that it is limited, it's not creating a new. Ten foot setback for the entire property. It's. Creating a up to a ten foot encroachment for the support column in the roof overhang. The remainder of the site still would have to meet the twenty foot setback. If mission wants to pursue a revised setback for the entirety of the rear property line. That's no longer twenty feet and it's ten feet. I don't think anything written here is gonna be the best way to go forth with that because. The conditions are a little bit different. What you're approving is a little bit different. I think we would have to go to the, back to the drawing board with some of these conditions. These are not just talking about this element at. Roughly thirty feet above grade with a small-ish support column. You're talking about potentially. Structures the entire length of the site, ten feet from the property line.
Right.
Can I throw something out? After Yancy, of course.
Maybe help with not setting a precedent, you know, it's been developed with zero and actually encroaching into right away. Does that help the commission in any way by having a building that's been there with zero setback?
Oh, the existing building is nonconforming to the setbacks?
Oh, it's, it's into the right, it's in Rafta right away. It's kind of a mess.
Well, it's not a remodel.
That's what I'm saying. We could be in here with a remodel and the same footprint, which wouldn't make sense. I'm just saying. This property has that uniqueness. It's not normal.
We could do a setback variance. That's still precedential, I guess. If you, if you're seeking, yeah, if you're seeking. A variance to this and your overall building footprint is outside of that. Setback, I feel like that's an acceptable thing to be doing. Like you're not. Saying, hey, we wanna. Ten foot.
Let let me test drive something here. I I think, I think one of the unique situations here is that it, that it abuts the Rio Grande. One of the, let's call it arteries of Carbondale. It is, you know, alternative transportation. We all use it and love it. It is, it is family friendly, all these great things, right? We have a chance to set a precedent here actually in a positive, one that looks at this property. As a kind of a project is a catalyst for kind of double loading, you know, not only one thirty-three. But also activating the Rio Grande in a, in a new way. So, and and I'm sorry, I'm a little disorganized in my words here, but if 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 you follow me, what I'm trying to say is. Is there an opportunity to look at? This. And then future development saying, when you bring in active use. One that is, you know, visually and socially activating along the Rio. You know, that is a, a, a news, a new, it's not an alley, it's not commercial. But it's something that maybe is valuable to this town, valuable to future development. That when done in a. In a, in a way, especially like this, could be a benefit to our community. Does that make sense? Again?
I mean, we could use any that or any other. I think there are other opportunities if we can't manage to define this as a true variance. I think we could even say, yeah, we could say we could set that as a precedent. I don't, I mean, it's triangular lot. Why are we, why are we calling it a rear? Yard or rear setback? I mean, it could be a side setback and just be ten feet that way.
Yeah, it's, I I don't want to get into the. How we're defining it. I think, I think for the purpose of this conversation, it is defined as a rear setback. I understand what you're saying, Nick. I don't think.
Well, let's just get to the.
Of variants or Nicholas, sorry, I don't think a variance would necessarily achieve what you're talking about. I think that's really a. Code amendment to create a new rear setback category for transit of.
It was definitely, yeah, right.
But I do hear what you're saying.
You know, it it is that there is a, a deeper thing here. And I'm trying to kind of get around the variance language, you know, it's, this is where I'm going with this. So I truly believe there's a, there is a. A next level of how this community can look at the Rio, you know, whether, whether we believe, you know. Rafta and their intentions to throw trains down there tomorrow or not. You know, aside from all that, you know, it's, it is. It is an artery for this, this town. So, sorry, it's, so so box aside.
We have considered it very similar to the Beltline in Atlanta, if anybody's been there. If you ride your bike around there, there's coffee shops. Beer stores, flower shops. And people are just kind of cruising up and down, having little businesses and it's really active, so it is a furniture rail line as well.
So I think the challenge for this commission then is to figure out how it wants to. Do this in 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 two ways. Number one, a way that if if we believe that it's a. Supportive, if we believe it, it's okay for this project and it's, it's not a hindrance to anybody else. And then two, is it a, a variance language or, or another tool? Is that a way to summarize this? We're, we're circling here a little bit. I'm just trying to kind of kick us. The record is skipping.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that you've kind of looked for the kind of. The simplest path forward and that's why we're at this variance.
Correct.
So then.
Co- co- a code amendment would be a much more challenging process and. I I felt that, you know, a variance would be the most straightforward. I also felt just limited into this element would be, again, supporting that least amount of. Improvement. And if in the future, the applicant or the town want to. Consider revising setbacks adjacent to the Rio Grande Trail. You know, that can be a larger community conversation, but I felt this was the. The simplest pathway forward and really, you know, I I don't have any concerns with any of the other findings. It was just that. Own actions is really tough. But with that being said, you know, are there greater benefits? That this project provides that are unique to the site, you know, that that could. Could be assigned to this site, this development, this very specific application that might be challenging for. Another project to generally achieve. And that was kind of. My thought saying that might be the simplest language to craft. That can allow that. Variance or that setback encroachment to, to move forward.
Could we somehow just grandfather it in with the existing? From the last structure? No, it's a whole new structure.
I, I, I think Jeff and Nick are, I, I, I have to agree with both of them on the language of number two. It feels like when you put triangle in there along with the other hardships. It's, it would, I, I, it seems like a very hard item to replicate. And if somebody else has that situation, well, you know. I'm happy to talk about that one as well, then.
And it might be along the Rio Grande.
There you go.
Easily say that's, that's why it's not their own actions is because. Of those very unique circumstances, if that's what you want to. Make the finding for.
Right, so.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to beat a dead horse or anything, but. Jared, I mean, I guess is your concern regarding this, just that, you know, if this project didn't follow through and then this variance is still. Available on this property. That. Then something else could come in that would be too close to the Rio Grande.
Can we just align it with this project?
Not necessarily. So I think this is going to be aligned with this project in order for the variance to. It'll be part of a larger ordinance development agreement in order for any of these approvals to. Take hold, this project has to move forward. Furthermore, the way the variance is granted, again, it's not. Reducing the setback on the entire property from twenty to ten. It's allowing this element to approach up to. Ten feet. And so if this element changes ever so slightly, that would still be captured in the variance, but it wouldn't allow this applicant to say. Now I want to put another roof overhang and another support column in a different portion of the site. That also goes ten feet into the setback. So I I'm not concerned about. Another project on the site. I'm more just concerned about. The potential precedent setting nature of, I would like a large roof overhang because it makes my building more. Attractive or functional or whatever. That's, yeah.
That, that narrow issue is the issue just in the wording of your fourth finding for approval. I'm not comfortable with saying outright. Although this is the applicant's own actions. I mean, let's say. The applicant's actions are maintaining a twenty foot setback except. At a, in a very slight area where the roof overhang and support needs to encroach by a couple of feet. I, I think that's the only. Opening you're creating in the language.
I agree with that, Jeff. I mean, I'm, I'm good with the variance.
I'm, I'm supportive of the variance too, for the record. I just love to see that fourth finding of approval say something like. The applicant's design maintains a twenty foot setback except for this and a ten foot. Rear setback is the. Is for the community benefit.
Does anybody? Have anything, a stance that is different? So, I mean, given, given, given the changes that Jeff just gave us, I mean, are we, do we feel like this wording is adequate? For variance? We're just gonna make the minor amendment, a minor, minor text amendment to the, the amendment to number four as stated.
It's past tense, think Jared's all over that. Busy squirrel over there.
He's still thinking. We'll, we'll let him keep working on that. And then, so we'll go back to the first one, just regarding the site plan. And just making sure that. We all feel like the site plan is. Meaning it's the zone district and if anybody had any additional comments or, you know, requests of the applicant.
I really enjoy how that comes up to the Rio Grande. Think that was really well done by Connect One.
I think my, my only comment is. Why do we have to have three different pedestrian accesses tying into Crystal Valley Trail? Just because, I don't know, this. I mean, I know it's pretty small, but at the same time, it's like, there's already so many intersections on that bike path. Do we need to add? Three different pedestrian accesses onto this property that are accessing the bike path. Along one thirty-three.
Have you walked, have you walked over there? Or, or ridden your bike right there? Cause it's really a funky little spot. I don't know if we have to have three, but it's. Kind of weird. I don't have a problem with three.
Yeah, okay. They're separating uses. Which I mean, I don't know that, I, I guess even just it from a. Rest, restaurant perspective, do you really want to have all these different accesses coming onto your property even for that matter? So I'm not even sure if that's something that we really want to enforce, but. Maybe just something to consider.
I think the only, you know, logistical, I guess. Challenge that would be, you know, you, you will likely be serving alcohol. And so there is, there is a potential enforcement. People are gonna have a great time here. You have a, you have an outdoor patio. People will be ambling about. There is that far northern point where, you know, and this is, I don't think it's in our purview. But I, I think to that point, there is, you know, the potential for that. Do you, do you see like?
I mean, I was just curious to see what the, you know, the position that the rest of the commission stood on that. But I mean, it doesn't sound like anybody's really too concerned about it.
It, it almost seems like the middle one to me, I understood it as, as more like this for bikes. You know, an efficient way to get bikes in and out. The other ones are for, you know, ones for car. Connection or coming, coming from town and the other ones from north. So I, I kind of get the, where, where you're coming from on that. I don't know if it's.
Yeah. And then my only other thing was just regarding that manager's parking space, making sure that that's actually accessible. Cause it is a pretty tight turn into that little spot there. And, you know, I, I guess, you know, I'd like to. You know, if we're, if we're actually counting that a parking space, I want to see that it's actually. Accessible, because some of those turning curves. If that's a, if that's a wall right there. It's tight. Yeah, so.
The manager better earn that spot too. It's, it's prime, prime time.
Many Coopers.
But again, that's, that's also just, I'm sure you guys don't want to create a parking spa, spot that you can't access. So I think from that, that's, that's just kind of more on the design side of it, so. Other than that, no, no other comments.
I had one very nitpicky thing and I was just rather than, I was just let it out. Again, I'm looking at the landscape plan. Lot of information there. Your, in your layout dimensions from your posts, you're pulling from. From your support poles to your building facade. That seven eleven dimension. But you aren't showing the dimension between the, the narrow space there. Is that, is that access? I mean, you're showing a, a bathroom. There. But is that gonna be, can you get a wheelchair through there? Might want to just label, that was, maybe you want to just label that. Right. Connect One better show up next time. No. I just wanted to clarify that and make sure.
Any other general comments regarding the site plan? Jeff, how you feeling? Good. Kim? Good? Cindy? Nick? Good, but the condition of one thirty-three is hurting us as a community.
Noted.
It's hurting, and it's hurting good development.
Yep, it is. But, you know, maybe the challenge is also we're seeing better development as a, as a result of these constraints.
Yep.
You know, evolution is occurring.
Yep.
Go Darwin Design.
Can I ask the architects a quick question about materials?
Yeah.
Do we, do we see limestone like that anywhere else in town?
The new bakery.
I think the stone is a representative at this point. I think we will likely do a local sourcing stone. And to the, the lead credit, you know, we currently have glue lamp beams. We have a CLT ceiling. The structure's been developed. And so it's, we're not straying away from that. And I think it's not just gonna be picking a random stone from. Very far away, that's expensive to transport here, but more of a local stone that's gonna be appropriate to what we're doing.
Love to hear that. Thank you.
I, I just was a point on that, you know, back usually when I first got on this commission. Some of, you know. Some projects in town weren't being very honorable with, with what they were showing and what they, what they were building. So I, I think just to kind of. Somehow, no, 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 not. Saying your team in any way or ownership group would do that. But if, if it's not gonna be what's in here, and I appreciate that it's gonna be more in a local direction. Maybe just somehow confirming that and making sure that that is. Followed throughout with, with that and that it's.
So, sorry. Are we just gonna limit it to natural stone and tone and not so much the type of stone? Is that what you're trying to get at?
Oh, gosh, no, I, I'm just trying to avoid, you know, just. Oh, gosh, no, I I'm just trying to avoid, you know, just, I think that that bait and switch is still has a has a hole on me. There's still pain there. So I'm just wanting a clean route through here. Again, not saying I think there's best intentions on it, but just a way to.
If the stone looks and feels significantly different from the visual representation. That material will come back to this group for a thumbs up.
Sure.
Is that is that fair?
I'm comfortable.
I mean, that being said, I wouldn't want to. Because honestly, I I think that a darker color would fit a lot better with the town, just because that. So, you know, it's like I almost want to encourage. A different stone than them to stick with that one, if that makes sense.
I don't know if you. It was a purview, so so much ever. This is. This is this is a lot for me, Jay.
My last day, so. Might as well do it.
There's a lot of different stone. Patterns that I'm seeing in here between the rendering, the three D elevation, the image provided. I don't think there's a specific. Stone that isn't in mind here. I think what Ryan is saying, from an architect's point of view, is like this is what we're thinking. But it's not going to be like some egregious like, oh.
Lick and stick?
Uh, all of a sudden, it's stucco, you know, like.
Thanks, Yancy.
That's my interpretation of the mismatch.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm good with it. I think if. Are we are we agreeing with what Jared's saying? If there's an egregious variance from what we are seeing in these.
Is there gonna be a mockup? Is that is that part of the?
If you guys want to require a mockup, you can, but it's not currently.
I mean, I just suggest.
Proposed. You also could say you want to see final materials represented.
Is that a?
Prior to issuance of a building permit, if you want, or you could just say, look, you guys are approving this kind of. Grayish stone, and as long as it's largely compliant with that. You're comfortable with the. Slight variations, whether it's a slightly darker tone, but if he comes back with something, say, hot pink stone, then that would come back to this group.
So that's a party. Jeff, Kim, Cindy, Nick, Jesse, how do y'all feel on this one? I I think because it was pitched as a aesthetic kind of arrival thing, I think it's 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 puts itself in that position. Um, you know, I think I've heard a lot tonight about the appreciation for the quality of of the. Architectural concept that's been presented. So how do you all feel about this?
We're gonna use the rendering as a kind of set in stone. Launch point.
Right, yeah, that's that's totally understood. And I I think that, but we have porcelain, it may end up being.
Or some sort of other class A rated siding.
Right.
There's not, there's another opportunity.
Yeah.
So either we enable Jared on some level um to be kind of, you know, to review this, or we put it in language that it comes back to us. Those are the two reasonable routes.
Again, just. Yeah, I would say trust, trust the staff is gonna bring something back, knowing. Other projects that have had larger changes and say, hmm, that that looks like we're teetering on the edge. Let's have the planning commission check in to make sure the quality is still there.
Yeah. I I like that. I mean, honestly, that's what we did on the projects by the roundabout.
Yep. And we got more grasses, damn it.
If it went from gray stone to.
Pink stone.
Pink stone, then maybe we should check in.
A natural tone.
Yeah.
If it went from mid-gray to dark gray, I'm probably not gonna.
Right.
Question it.
And again, I think to your point, Ryan, you you it's since you're still good, like lead is is. Is this is part of the goal here, and we know what that means as far as local materials, so.
Yeah. Um, I mean, with that, are do you do we feel like we're we're ready to move this one along?
Giddy up.
I have a potential revised finding number four for the variance based on what Jeff had suggested. I can read if you guys are comfortable with that.
Sounds great.
Uh, the applicant's design maintains a twenty-foot setback except where a roof overhang and support column extend up to ten feet into the rear setback. Which is necessary due to the combination of the triangular lot shape, required site access point, and twenty-foot rear setback.
This bump.
I think that's a great improvement. Thanks, Jared.
Legal approval.
All right, well, with that, I would entertain motion.
What page is it on?
Can I do this one? You can do this.
That was so hard on Nancy. Page.
I need to send him an apology.
I'd like to move to recommend approval of the combined application for administrative site plan conditional use for expansion of a structure on a nonconforming lot. Alternative compliance for an alternative to landscape island requirements. And a reduction to the minimum drive aisle length. And a variance from the minimum rear yard setback with the following conditions of approval and findings affect. One through. Thirteen. With the amendment to the variance number four. I don't know.
All right. Uh, Nick made the motion and Cindy seconded.
Great.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi, Jess.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for your patience. We definitely had to work through the traffic thing a little bit there. So appreciate your patience.
I'm really excited. You finally got that bridge piece. Really excited. It's gonna be in town too, nonetheless.
Thanks, guys. We'll chat soon about next steps.
Thanks, guys.
Parking and zoning, here we are.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
We talk about cars.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Yeah, looking good. Will do. Um, staff updates.
Um, map Carbondale. You're looking, we've been working with Bike Ped Trail on some revisions. Um, there will be a commission open house, I believe, at the beginning of October. We'll circulate the date. Um, and, you know, we're inviting all commissions to. Show up if they want, learn kind of about what's happening, what the recommendations are. Um, and provide any comments and ultimately send that plan forward to the board of trustees for adoption. At your next meeting, you guys will have to appoint a new chairperson at a minimum. You might need to appoint a new treasurer, secretary.
Do you really have this?
Party planner. Everyone's gonna have a role now. Um. Uh, no, just just. Oh, no, just just uh. Just chair and depending on how the vote goes potentially vice chair. So um, that'll be kind of the first action on your guys' next meeting. Right now, I don't believe we have anything. In the hopper for the twelfth, so we may or may not have a meeting on the twelfth. Um, as you can see, looking out, I've canceled the October tenth meeting. And October twenty-fourth is tentative. So just wanted to let you guys know about those upcoming meetings. We're thinking we may get an application for the twenty-fourth. The Clay Center might come back. Um, if not, we'll likely cancel that meeting as well. So just want to let you guys know that. Um. I think that's really all I have that I can remember at this hour of the day, night, evening?
Night.
Night. You guys have anything? Make sure. Watch your piece. All right, that's all.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. It's been a good run.
Yeah, wow.
Good work, man.
Honestly, it's it's really hard to leave this. What are you gonna do with yourself on? What are you gonna do with yourself on Thursdays?
You got a girlfriend who bought a house. Come on, and what else is he gonna do? Why is he leaving? He's gonna have fun.
Thanks for your service, Jay.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Really granted him a six-month reprieve. He's gonna be back here.
He'll be back.
Of the year.
Yes.
Motion, Andrew.
Second.